Appreciate folks being with us today. Commissioner Levesey is out of town, so I'll jump in for him today on Black Lives Matter. Really, before we get into the agenda and the things that were needed to do today, I just wanted to mention those solutions that are being proposed at the State House right now would have very dramatic impact on county operations. Not to mention other entities like schools, villages, cities, everybody would be impacted. If you're in the audience right now and you're thinking, "What the heck is he talking about?" It's the proposal to eliminate what's called Inside Village. Counties experience might be somewhere on the order of 14 to 16 million a year that would need to be accounted for in some way. Other entities are perhaps in worse situations than we are. Every school system in the county would be dramatically impacted. Positively or negatively, I am not casting aspersions on what the state is talking about. They want to substantially reduce property taxes, which is, you know, a great idea. Of course, it means your schools close, and then you might be like, "Well, not the greatest idea." But anyway, I just wanted y'all to be aware of the fact that we're plugged into it and evaluating all scenarios. And all three of us commissioners are working favorishly with the County Commissioners Association of Ohio and others to advocate for some sensible solution here that might perhaps have some reduction in property tax, but hopefully not adversely affect the services that we're obligated by the state to provide. It's kind of a weird equation. The state passes these laws saying you have to do A, B, and C. And now they're about to pass laws saying that there's no way to pay for it. So that's a bit of a logic box that we're in, and we'll sort through it. But we'll be all right under every scenario because we won't have it any other way. So we're going to get to public comment here shortly, but we are thrilled to have with us some of our first responders. The group that we have with us today are the dispatchers. You know, they're a little bit the unseen first responders. But if you've heard some of the situations that they find themselves in and how they handle them, I think you would have tremendous empathy for the job they're doing, appreciation. So we're going to recognize that today with a proclamation that we're doing where we're expressing our appreciation for folks. And I may have said county, it could include city or legislature as well. So. Yeah, I will. Sheriff, do you want to say a few words here? I don't read proclamations because I think it's kind of silly, but I'll say a few words. But Sheriff, you want to jump in here?
Well, what I'll say is that the idea to be recognized as first responders has been a conversation for several years now. And although a lot of the telecommunicators aren't necessarily exposed to physical danger like typical first responders, they're a bit of a first responder in a different manner. They're exposed to the trauma, the drama, the situations. They're the first ones there. They're with these people that have maybe the worst day of their life, and they're contacting us and reaching out for help. They're with them that whole time. They're lifesavers. They're providing crucial instruction and direction to folks that call in when one of their loved ones may have collapsed or something like that. And they're providing them with guidance and the ability to potentially resuscitate them. So it is a thing that happens over and over and over again. So again, they're exposed to a different type of the first responder element than, say, your patrol officers or corrections folks or anybody like that. So it's a, like you said, it's a thing that kind of is behind the curtain, so to speak. And it's an important thing, I think, to bring it out into the light and recognize exactly the job that these folks do for citizens of the county.
Yeah, I think maybe a way of saying it is they're not just first responders, but first of the firsts.
First and the last.
Commissioner Levesey, did you want to share?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, when I was in the Department of EMS Service, that was made for GPS. So responders today have the benefit of GPS taking you to a particular home, different situation, location, but we didn't have that. So we obviously had to rely on our dispatchers to guide us and get us to the right location and actually provide the necessary information to be prepared for every situation. And I'll tell you what, without the dispatchers, I'd say, well, we would have been hurt. And I've always appreciated dispatchers. And sometimes, if they're economists, how they're able to do that, sometimes I get more excited than I should have. So, you know, thank you for everything you do.
So Sheriff, if you and maybe the folks that are here, first responders that are with us today, could maybe join us up here for their presentation, make a couple of pictures. Would that be all right? No, right up here. Right here. It's kind of maybe getting a little half moon here. I would like for you to be in the center of our picture if we could.
No, I'm good. I just have to stay on like a flamingo.
Sheriff wants you to be in there, too.
But you know, you're the important one. That's right.
Greg, are any of your people here?
Sorry. Yep, yep. All right, just making sure.
And then while we're here and while we got you up, do you want to share a few words?
Sure. I just really want to thank Pickerington and Lake, sir. They're both great agencies that have worked with our county throughout the years, and I think we've got a great partnership going. I think we all work well together, and, you know, we all have the same goal of serving the citizens of the county. And I want to thank the county commissioners and Connie Cordell and the sheriff for, you know, helping us get this initiative passed. We're hoping that we can change the classification of 911 telecommunicator. Right now, we're classified as clerical. And I have great respect for everyone that is clerical, but that's not the job that we do. We are, you know, as was mentioned, the first first responders. We help deliver babies. We help give instruction on CPR. We talk to people who are at their worst moment of their life, and we keep them calm. We gather all the information that we can to keep our responders safe, and so our responders know what they're walking into also. So I just appreciate this. And all of the counties in Ohio, we're trying to get them to recognize telecommunicators as first responders so that hopefully, you know, on the state level, they're going to recognize that, and they're going to see that, you know, Ohio is behind all of us, and we can get that changed. So, thank you.
If I had another proclamation in my pocket, I would give it to you for being Mother of the Year, too. Yeah, massive number of fans of your daughter, so.
Oh, thank you.
Let's get one more shot down. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you all very much. Folks, I appreciate your patience and your courtesy as we recognize those folks. I think about them a lot. I really do, and I really appreciate it. I've had an opportunity to share a lot of appreciation with them today. At this time, we'll move on to public comments. If you would like to address the commission, you can approach the podium. Begin by stating your name and residential address. You have a three-minute time limit, so if you would keep your remarks within that time limit, it would be appreciated. Under those terms and conditions, does anybody would like to address the commission at this time? Ray, how are you today?
Real good, since I'm a year older.
How old is your birthday?
Today. Thank you. 101. No, not that. I feel like that some days, but it's 91. But it's great to be here, and I thank the Lord for the privilege I have of all the years behind me. And I'm looking forward to some more years in front of me, too. So the doctor keeps telling me that I have all the vitals that most 60-year-olds would want. The only thing, I mean, walk the cane and a little helper. But with that thought, I would like to just lift this group that's honored for what they do in critical situations. Sometimes they don't want to come and happen, but they have to respond. So, Lord, as we come before you this morning, we thank you for the years that you've given us, and we thank you for the people we have here in this room that are quick and early responders to help the officers and the people that are on the spot before the others arrive. And we just lift them before you, Lord, that they do the right thing, and that you're with them. And we pray for all the leaders in this room. We pray that they will look to you, Lord, for the guidance and direction that they need. And we thank you for all these people that are willing to extend their life in all that they do. And we praise you and thank you now in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Ray. Does anybody else would like to address the commission at this time?
Good morning. I'm Chris Snyder, the day ten, state reporter to Somerset. I'm formerly with National Good Renewables. We had a company name change. We are now Geronimo Power. I'll give you a little background. Company was born back in 2004. Our founder, Tony Winhardt, owned his farm in Minnesota under the name of Geronimo Wind. Couple of years later, we started doing solar and we became Geronimo Energy. In 2019, the name changed, and it was to National Good Renewables. Six years later, we've changed the name back. We are Geronimo Power now. A little bit more, last week, our construction team was here in Lancaster. We went out to our project site, which is Carnation. Took a little tour of the site, drove around it, looked at the area, waited there and everything. We also met with Soil and Water last week. And we also had a meeting with one of the Mandan Township trustees, discussed the project and what it would be like for the construction project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone else would like to address the commission at this time? We thank you all for coming. The commission did hold a special meeting last week when it became apparent that we were close to missing the June 6 deadline for the appointment of an ad hoc member to the power siting board as it relates to the Carnation application. And we did make that appointment last week at that special meeting. And we've named County Administrator Connie Cordell as that member on that project. And the commission is in summer mode right now with one of us missing on most Tuesdays for this trip or another. But when we're all back together, which I think might not be till July, we'll probably have more to say about these things. Steven, how are you today?
Fine, thanks, Commissioner.
Good. Is there any update on legal?
There is.
Well, I might be in line for some overtime as things unwind here at the State House, so.
Give me a bale, whatever you need.
Keep your schedule clear. We appreciate you and the service you provide. Thank you. County Administration.
Yeah, you could see me before you popped out.
We already have questions.
All right. So we received notice from the Board of Elections that they certified the May 6 election, specifically in reference to the Developmental Disabilities Levy that cast. There were 11,332 votes cast, and of which 7,465 were for the levy. De Michaels, Major Laura and Brian De Michael, they received a promotion, and so they will be moving on from our community. They are the majors here at our local Salvation Army, and we are recognizing them for their service to the community. And there is a proclamation on today to do that. And there is an event being hosted next Thursday where I believe Commissioner Levesey and Deputy County Administrator Porter will be there to present that proclamation in person. They will still be assisting with the local capital campaign overseeing that, so they'll still be connected to the community. We're really appreciative of all of their work and commitment in the 11 years they've been a part of our area. Highlights of resolutions, revenue. The review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals. There are 36 resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting. We had talked about the proclamations. Two of them, the third, the last one there, is a proclamation for Anchor Hocking and its employees as the company is celebrating its 120th anniversary. And I believe you were a former employee of Anchor Hocking, Commissioner Levesey.
I did, in the 60s.
So we're thankful for you, too. And.
We had 11,500 employees.
That's a lot. That proclamation will be presented June 28. Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Levesey will be attending an event to present that there.
I'm going because it's at a brewery, so I got to be there. I'm going to drive it home.
And moving on, we have a resolution for an expedited Type 2 annexation of .605 acres from Pleasant Township into the city of Lancaster. Engineer's Office has two resolutions for their crack ceiling project. The first is to approve the contract, and the second for the notice to commence. Also, from the Engineer's Office, is an approval for a change order for the refuge road intersection safety improvements. Jeremiah, anything you want to add to that?
No, we're just patching up some jobs, finishing those up, and keep the business going.
Very good. Thank you. Facilities has resolution on authorizing a right-of-way easement for property owned by the county's members of the former Colonnade Commercial Property Owners Association. So when we purchased the Sheridan Center, which used to be the Colonnade Building, there were a number of associations that were in place to manage that particular property. And there was a parking lot association, so to speak, that all the surrounding adjacent property owners were paying into to maintain that property as well as the lane that travels in and also provided them access to their businesses. So this resolution would allow me to vote to dissolve that particular association. The other members are, we're anticipating their vote as well because we are doing these right-of-way easements, which would grant them ingress and egress to their properties that are right there surrounding the parking lot.
Yeah, so I appreciate your work on that issue. Somehow, I don't really cast blame on anybody, but some of us weren't keenly aware of these problems, the easement issues, until we were nearing closing on the property, and we had to make a judgment call whether to delay the closing. We had some tight meetings there, as well as grant issues and things, or to just kind of take that problem under advisement, sort it out later. This is sorted out later.
Yes, and I appreciate John's work, Amy Brown Thompson's work. I'm sure she put in the rest of the civil team as well. But yes, we are accomplishing this within the timeframe that we had set forth because we had another financial piece there. There was some money in escrow for a period of time, so we've been working very quickly. We also did need to have outside counsel with Stubbleton, and very appreciative of Brad Johnson and Dan Pruth and their work to assist us getting this over the finish line. But either of you want to add anything else? Do we have the meeting scheduled?
No, we wouldn't be having this. Doc's been pulling that meeting. They're just ours. They've already been provided the easement drafts. They've already been provided the resolution, so everyone's aware and on board. Should be relatively smooth, and voting is encouraged.
Okay.
Okay, so John tells, "It's all going to go smooth," and circle back to that.
All right. JMS has several service agreements on the agenda for approval. And then lastly, Regional Planning has four resolutions. Development Agreement for Sycamore Grove, a change order for offhearted Pleasantville, and two participation agreements, one with the village agreement and the other with Walnut Township. Ali, anything you want to add there?
Great, last three goals, two briefly. One is for rounding up the 2022 grant. The others are starting the 2024 grants.
And thank you for your work on the CBGT grants. I know that is time-consuming. Bart, budget review.
Yes, we continue to hold sales tax with both the budget and the forecast that we plan. My current model shows that for about $407,000, we're about 335% higher than the current budget at this point. Year-over-year, we are about $467,000 better than last year. Making up those increases, non-autos was up 7.19%, bang. Autos was up 4.42%, bang. And year-to-date, non-auto is up 4.18% Q to date. And auto is up 6.2% year-to-date.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Bart. And we have Bennett leading the charge today with a shout-out. Do you want to take calendar review and invitations received, please?
Under calendar review and invitations received, the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day event on June 11 at 8:00 a.m. at Life Church Vineyard in Pleasantville. The MCU Governing Board meeting on June 11 at 11:00 a.m. at Fairfield County EMA. The CFLP Board of Directors meeting on June 13 at 9:00 a.m. at the Donald Hill County Administration Building in Newark. Under correspondence, the Board of Elections certificate of result of election, Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities Renewal Levy. Columbus Dispatch, author of Max Doby, May 30th, titled "Central Ohio in Line for $1 Billion-plus Data Center." A thank-you note to Commissioner Levesey from the Military Veterans of Olive Dale. An email from AEP on June 2, subject AEP Ohio Base Rate Case Filing. And lastly, correspondence regarding industrial solar projects.
Couple of issues to touch on in terms of the calendar correspondence to make people aware, but Bennett mentioned CFLP will be meeting with that board on Friday 13. That's a consortium of Perry, Shocken, Licking, and Fairfield that runs the Solid Waste District. One of the many bills pending in legislature right now of concern is a bill essentially that would allow Perry County to possibly withdraw from that arrangement, given that they have the largest landfill seats in the poorer county area. And I don't think they'd choose to pull out of that, but if they do, that would cause a series of reactions that would be pretty complicated in terms of how we treat sanitation and recycling. But we're looking at it. We'll keep an eye on it, do the best we can with whatever situation winds up to be on that. And on the, there's an article there on Central Ohio being in line for a billion-dollar data center. Maybe not. Again, there are parts of bills pending at the State House right now that would probably result in that project being not done, which, again, wait and see how these things turn out. But I don't mean to keep harping on what's going on at the state right now, but there's another more important thing happening right now. I don't know what it is. Sheriff, anything you'd like to add on anything in the whole wide world?
Wow. You know, we're just keeping an eye on the current lineup, I guess, with respect to what's going on in Los Angeles, things like that. That could take on all this area, probably in the State House area. We don't necessarily have any intel at this point that would suggest a public safety issue for anybody, but we get that kind of information, make sure that it gets out to the public areas to avoid things like that.
Yeah, and I think I can speak for my colleagues at the commission level, kind of similar to some of the conversations we might have had back in 2020. We want law and order at any price. Lisa, how are you doing?
Good, thank you. Heading out this afternoon for the summer conference for the High Records Association. I'll be there Monday through Sunday. Got a really good agenda for that, so I'm excited to participate. And then next Tuesday, I will unfortunately be missing the meeting because my vendor will be here to oversee some things that we've been making. will be here, um, to go over some, um, things that we've been making changes on and, and see if there's any updates or things that, that we need or are tightly needed as we go through some of the changes, so.
Glad you're here today. Uh, I think I'll join you in missing the meeting next week, so.
All of that.
I'll be in a different place, other centers. Jeremiah.
Well, we are, we are, uh, working on construction right now. We're, uh, taking care of most of our culverts that we need to get done and, uh, bridge decks. Uh, we're aiming right now at the roots are going to be chip sealed and, uh, paved. Only makes sense we get out there and get that stuff done before we go put brand-new tape. So that's the plan, we try to get that stuff done early now and then, uh, paving, chip seal will take place, uh, chip seal will be in the middle of July and paving. They haven't told us yet, but probably around August, September, maybe October, maybe.
I see a question that's not your responsibility, but I thought maybe you would know the answer to it.
It does all the time.
This alley that's out back here that we come in to, come to the meetings and people come into work and stuff like that, it falls apart all the time. And it's like every four months we have to dodge another pothole in that alley. There are other places where alleys don't fall apart. Are we doing something wrong in this alley? I mean, is there some way to like make that alley like not fall apart every four months? Or what's it, what are we doing here?
Yeah, uh.
No, you're, it's not you, I get that.
I know, I know, that's good, I give you the piece of advice. So basically, if you're continuing to have that problem, you got base failure. So it's not the pavement that's the problem, it's whatever's going on underneath that, so. Um, what we typically do, does is we'll undercut and then build it back up with good material, um, to get the support under that pavement that it needs.
So in, in short, and again, I'm not casting aspersions on the city because I'm sure they're making whatever decisions they deem appropriate, but it's basically just as a result of patchwork being done, but base work kind of being less.
Yeah, this is what you get when you continue sleeping patchwork.
I don't know, John, I, maybe if sometime in a polite way or whatever, you could maybe just touch base with the city. It's just, it's not a big deal, but it's weird that one falls apart all the time and all the other roads I drive on seem to fall apart at a normal rate.
Yeah, there's some drainage, obviously, we're on the top of Hill, but, um, I don't believe that they chip seal that out. I believe in these, they use a chip seal method, that's probably for the benefit of us and others.
Yeah.
If it does, as Jeremiah said, it needs more in-depth repair. Um, I, I will definitely talk to the city.
That, that's actually a prime example of why we do chip seal. Simply don't have the funding to, to be able to go out and pave all the roads, so in order to keep things like this happening, we'll chip seal them, just do that, seal them up, keep the water out, that's the most important. So if once a road gets to this state, it's pretty hard to do.
Well, that being said, the last time they blacktopped, they did a mediocre job as far as blacktopping. Where do you go? Mediocre? It was, that's what we shoot for. I learned, I'm having fun, I, I get it, I appreciate you commenting on that email, like I say, I know it's not your thing, so.
Uh, John, brother, I didn't talk to him.
Dr. Brown, how are you doing today?
Mr., how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
I agree with you that the proposed legislation is certainly the most significant issue for all of us, and our association is working in tandem with the C C A O as well to provide information and be able to answer questions and evaluate of the multiple levels of, you know, things that are proposed. Level one and level two may see some changes based upon the outcome of that particular legislative activity. In addition to that, we have adjusted our financial report to show subsequent events, and we typically would not put in subsequent events, proposed legislation, but we are doing that, given its significant nature at this time, uh, the report date is 2/30th, so we'll put in whatever information we have as of 2/30th. London is right on target with all levels of indicators, so the current year is right on target. The financial indicators that are presented by the auditors state, most of them are positive. One is cautionary, uh, that speaks to the relationship between revenues and expenditures, which will only become more cautionary, uh, with the proposed legislation. Launching taxes right now are about 60% over the previous, um, hot years at the Decorative Arts Center and the Visit Fairfield County, the Visitors Convention Bureau have already received their first half and are, um, you know, monitoring that along with us as well. Top employers, we are making, uh.
Can I ask you a question? Just, I guess, make a comment before you move on to the next subject on that issue of 335 at all?
Yes.
And I think in some of the, the inside baseball lingo, everybody's just talking about 335, but there are, there are a number of other bills to be, uh, watched as well. But, um, one question that a number of counties are asking themselves right now has to do with the extent to which, um, and I'm going to use the wrong language, you're welcome to use the correct language, but whether your inside millage is pledged, uh, to a particular debt obligation or not. And, and I spoke, uh, for a little while this morning with Mike Burns, who was 98.9% sure that ours were general, uh, obligations as opposed to specifically tied to a specific revenue stream, but he was gonna drill down on that a little bit.
Why is it specifically general obligation and not tied to, um, debt? However, it's fungible nature, so it affects the ability for debt and it affects ability for every public service, so the argument is still there. The other part is, as far as bond rating goes, bond raters have always been positive about how we have space and room and sales tax, but these types of changes that would affect our bond rating as well.
I understand and, and I, and again, uh, don't know how things are gonna turn out, don't know what our response is to a solution that, that's yet to be. I don't have a fine print on what they're gonna do yet. Um, I, I will say this to those that are paying attention and listening, um, the worst-case scenarios may not end up happening, generally don't, um, but this is gonna be very, very significant. Even the best of times, what happens next at the state is probably going to have a dramatic impact on every local government and local entity in the county. Um, and I think there are, and I'm not gonna get into them right now, but there are secondary and corollary impacts that have, I, I truly don't believe people have chased down yet to understand what they're doing, but if they have, I'm a stupid one. Please continue.
Yeah, there are multiple variables, that's for sure. Uh, we are monitoring the top employers, have a statistical analysis about that, looking at it over time. Right now, of course, Fairfield Medical Center and Health, that industry is very significant in the county, we've seen how that shifted and have a good base right now that is important to monitor that and track it. I know it's something that Regional Planning has used in grant applications in the past too. Thanks to the sheriff and his team for the self-defense courses. I took that course and enjoyed it very much and have a much better mindset about those types of situations, and you have top-notch trainers, just top-notch trainers. Um, the festival of the Fairfield County are, is map of the month, and it's been a very popular map of the month, and several people have indicated how that's just part of their summer vacation, it's a low-cost play to enjoy the summer. And then the final regular meeting of the Board of Revision is tomorrow. Uh, we'll be having after that, only administrative meetings if there happens to be some interest of penalties. I already spoke about the financial indicators, just wanted to draw attention to that and draw attention to two examples of really good government efficiency. Um, Doc Link is now live, it's a little bit ahead of schedule for us. This is a way that we're going to be able to have multiple political subdivisions provide data and give them data and it'll be at their fingertips and be able to modernize budget commission process, which comes at a very good time. The lot split application continues to be a very good application. Uh, we had one that occurred within one week, and this is a process that could take up to six months in the past, and it's averaging about two weeks now, and we had some that were even within the week. And so I thank you to all the partners, utilities, Slough Water and Regional Planning and the Engineer's Office and many others who have made that a reality because it's made a difference for people that we serve. Audit is ramping up this week, it's a very big week for our auditors. Um, so for those of you around the table who are going to get questions about your data and you'll have, um, questions about grants, those are things that really need to be responded to as quickly as possible. Auditors are also doing something different this year than they've done in the past, scope of service for the Board of Elections has been added, and it's quite programmatic, it's a programmatic scope of service, they're not looking at just the financial data, but the kind of work that they do. Just mentioning that, so you have awareness because it's different and it's new and it's something that they're, um, ramping up on this week. In the Making Numbers Count seminar that's coming up, we're going to be discussing some new procedures for grants management and, uh, some new tools that will help with that. And Transit D D and Out of H are really big players in that, just appreciate their partnership. Very helpful to have these tools to do that. Quite a lot, that's what we have.
Appreciate you, Dr. Brown.
Yes.
Tony, anything up above you today? Appreciate you. Rick, apart from that stellar transit conference that you and I were able to enjoy, what's going on with you?
I've spent ten minutes to review all of the video highlights from that.
Well, if you could concentrate on the metro areas and not talk about suburban or rural areas, that would entertain me, you know, a lot.
Uh, a few things, Commissioner Levesey, I'm sure you'll touch on the signing day, so still that under, uh, but, um, which is the paper mill down in Chillicothe is part of our workforce board responsibilities, is to help those employees and just, five seconds ago, got an updated war notice for them that they've extended another 60 days at least before the plant closures, so, uh, thanks to Bailey, our, uh, teams, a lot of, lot of work, um, in Chillicothe to get them, them ready. Um, actually, the legislation, um, Senate voted up the budget bill regarding data centers. Uh, I do feel, you know, we, we had conversations with Senator Schaefer yesterday, we feel they might be able to, because, uh, in, in the budget, uh, there might be some language that might be able to be adjusted that will protect the project for a billion-dollar support, so very hopeful for that. Speaking of the budget, um, as you can see, it's right now, in the Senate's version of the budget, we have $350,000 a year for programming at the Workforce Center, as we've said before, you know, we don't have a regular funding stream, it's been through grants, money from the state and, and through the degrees of the County Commission, uh, to be able to, to help fund students getting these opportunities. Um, if this goes through, this will open, sets us up for the next couple of years, so thankful to Representative Waring and Senator Schaefer on that. And, uh, I'd like to thank, um, everyone for, uh, the Power 125, which I was, uh, appreciated to be nominated for, the, uh, I was first in the ad that was taken out that I just saw, and that was a nice surprise, and, uh, also great publicity for Fairfield County as people have, have reached out, seen that the states, there's good things going on down here, which was no secret to us, it was a secret to a lot of people, but it's always nice for more people to hear about.
Tom, boy, anything else? Not too much. Ian?
Yes, sir. Uh, just, uh, wanted to reiterate, asking for continued heightened awareness related to, um, cyber attacks, uh, just last week, um, something floating around, a staff person from an engineer association, uh, was exploited and tons of emails went out. Um, just wanted to say a special thanks to Arthur Brown, bringing it to my attention as their auditors association was trying to get the word out, uh, and then members from Jeremiah's office, uh, you know, they reported those emails, uh, through our system, and that allowed for our system to mass delete, um, you know, the, the ones that were, uh, a problem. So, um, you know, our county staff, uh, reacted well there, so I, I just wanted to bring it up and, again, it must be a bit longer.
I'm glad you took my card, if you were to get in the building this morning, plus longer was not going to work.
That car key will work, uh, for several more months. Uh, you will receive a new one to replace that one.
Do I need to go, do I have to go to like to a photographer or something, or what do I do?
We might want to snap your picture, yes, um, if it's not already. Today, you know, the design.
Yeah, I mean, whatever I need to do, I'm willing to do it.
Thank you. Uh, we will, uh, we will take your glamour shot down on the first floor at 101, I can escort you there.
Yeah, I got it right now, there you go.
Can you put like hair on me?
That's Bennett, that's Bennett's area of expertise.
So I had my card replaced and they, they also took my photograph, it looks like it could belong on one poster.
It looks like what?
A wanted poster.
Wanted poster.
All right, Dan, well, let's, well, well, I'll, I'll do a picture today.
That's good.
Forty hours to go.
Doing well, thank you. We have our World Elder Abuse Awareness, uh, Day Breakfast tomorrow at 8:00 AM at Life Church. Uh, presentation will be on our elder abuse scam response pilot that we've been doing in Fairfield Federal, uh, they will be there as well to talk about the experience so far. Uh, we will also be awarding Partner of the Year tomorrow, so looking forward to that event, hopefully a lot of you can, uh, join us tomorrow.
So I, I just ran into a conflict, I was going to get it. So any way we can ask Commissioner Davis if, if he would do that, I'll stay. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna ask him about that here shortly. Tony and I are gonna visit, uh, after this meeting to go over, uh, the schedule tomorrow, which right now for me is really stacked, so we're gonna go over everything and just see what, what all I can get to, but the, the short answer is probably yes, I don't think I currently have a breakfast meeting tomorrow, it's just stacked up the rest of the day, so all county business if anybody cares. Always love to attend for that. I know. This case, okay, but. So you look at that, uh, scheduling for tomorrow, and I'll certainly get there if I can, like you, I certainly support, uh, the mission and like to show that support, so we'll see how that conversation about scheduling turns out tomorrow. For tomorrow. Uh, Brenda, how are you doing? Appreciate you being with us today, what's going on with community action?
Uh, lots of things going on, I mean, uh, after this meeting, we're gonna do our, uh, uh, second public hearing for the, the House Contact Presentation Program, so appreciate the partnership we have with the Academy, that's over here, is in the evening, prepare and already has program. Um, otherwise, we're kinda keeping an eye on what's happening, both at federal and state level relative to budget and how that's gonna impact, uh, our programs moving forward, so so far things seem, uh, pretty good, but you know, we've got always been, uh, number one.
Appreciate you being with us today. We're also, uh, fortunate enough to have Greg Butcher with us today, you may not have anything on your mind, but you're not usually here, so something's up.
See you at 10:30 for me.
Okay.
Other than that, just happy to be here.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I had to check with the boss, see where I was gonna be at 10:30. All right, well, appreciate you being with us today, thank you. Under, uh, old business, Commissioner Levesey, any old business. So, uh, Rick, uh, mentioned, uh, signing day last week, or four. You know, obviously, every, not everybody went through the program, was a deciding event, but, you know, that, it looked like turned out to be a cool event. I think the first year we had a few, about a handful, this year we had 34 that actually, you know, signed up with, uh, with their employers there. You know, at the end of the day, Rick, I think we're, we, when I say we, primarily you and your staff are changing lives, and really what's important.
Didn't it start out with three in the downtown center?
Yeah, we were sat down at the gazebo and trucks were driving by, we couldn't hear anything, and now we're up to, um, you know, about 34 and multiple eight businesses that were there, and, and what it is, is celebrating just like when somebody goes to. And what it is, is celebrating just like when somebody goes to signs for like, like college sports and make a big deal and big signing day for them. We feel we should do the same for these students that are going directly into careers of the trades, manufacturing, childcare. So it's great to celebrate them and make them feel like a little special, but also hopefully raises awareness to everybody that, hey, this is a good time now.
So I, you know, last week, myself and Commissioner Davis, we attended the groundbreaking for better place. And Commissioner Davis spoke, he gave a very good speech, actually. I did. You're right. But you know, one of the things, and I really never thought about it, but I should have, is how this really helps law enforcement. You know, and again, I should, because now law enforcement, if they had somebody that have issues, that now they have a place to take. That's not always been the case. I, you know, I think, I think what's happening there is just, it's a game changer for a lot of people. And then also last week, I went to Morrolo County with CCao. We had a regional meeting there. Of course, everybody knows the county that lost a deputy that was killed in the line of duty. And you know, Morrolo County is so fairly small county, about 35,000 or 165,000. I'll tell you that, those folks have their act together. They clearly, I'm very impressed by what they're able to accomplish with so many resources that they have, you know, obviously with the foreign population. So I have, thank you.
Thank you. Under old business, I'm currently the vice chairman of the Tax and Finance Committee at the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. Normally, we meet about once a quarter and talk about a couple bills of concern that are going on at the State House. We're meeting every week right now because of the fluidity and danger associated with some of the proposals. So we had a lengthy meeting last week. We're gonna meet again tomorrow. We're gonna meet every week until we kinda understand the situation and can then work to develop appropriate responses to the, to the multiple threats. When I say threats, provide services. That's what we do as a county. And wanna provide those services or not provide services because we think people don't need them, so let's provide more. I don't wanna be over the top about it. That's what I'm worried about right now and it's pretty hard to get in my head on anything else right now. That's our, that's our new business.
So this week, I'll actually be back at the Workforce Center again and speaking at the bottom of the regulation. And again, this is just the start of what we're gonna try to provide as far as healthcare that next company is respiratory therapy. So it's making a big difference, Rick.
Yeah, thanks to John and all the work they're doing and, you know, the IT side for getting all the renovations done and we'll be able to offer more and more healthcare programming. Let's, chatting for you.
My microphone's not on because Ani just alerted me to have a 10 o'clock meeting. Might have said something inappropriate when she mentioned that to me. You gotta get busy here. I'm gonna just move along here. Let's go to the loading platform right down here. Please rise if you're able and join us in the pleasure of allegiance. Bye. Okay, yeah. Okay, there. And to everybody who stands on the location, I know I've been invisible, but every state has this.
Thank you very much. Ben, do we have any announcements?
There are no announcements.
On to the incremental minutes for May 20th, 2025. In May 29th, 2025, special meeting. Second discussion, please call a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes passed two zero. From the Commissioners, Resolution 2025-06.10.A, a resolution authorizing the approval of proclamations.
Second discussion. Start a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions passed two zero. From Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities, Resolution 2025-06.10.F, a resolution authorizing the reduction in major expenditure object category appropriations for Fund Number 3064 FCBDD Capital Project Fund.
Fairfield County. So it's, that's G and H. Second discussion. Start a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions passed two zero. From the Fairfield County Quarter Com, please, Resolution 2025-06.10.I, a resolution authorizing the approval of repayment of an advance to the general fund from Fund Number 2689 to 8328 FY23 Adult Based Corrections.
Second discussion.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes two zero. From the Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2025-06.10.J, a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding for the commitment of funds to Hawken College from the Super Rapids Funds previously awarded to Fairfield County through an MOU between Fairfield County and the Ohio Department of Higher Education.
Second discussion.
I owe you to, um, help us, money from the state to, uh, vote for Hawken College for a, or program, sorry, I'm remembering.
Good.
Thank you. I think I know what you're saying there.
Thank you, prosecutors. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes two zero. From Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution 2025-06.10.K, a resolution to reduce appropriations and appropriations in the 2707 Emergency Management Performance Grant Fund.
Second discussion.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Resolution passes two zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2025-06.10.L, a resolution to approve the contract with Russell Standard Corporation for the 2025 Crack Seal Project.
Question now at 11 and we got a second discussion.
On our album, get back over and top it and that's, that's the key.
You're just the best.
Give as much information as I can.
Further discussion. Start a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions passed two zero. Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 2025-06.10.O, a resolution authorizing a right-of-way easement for property owned by the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners to members of the former Collinade Commercial Property Owners Association Incorporated.
So move. Second discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes two zero. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2025-06.10.P, a resolution authorizing the approval of a service contract for location services between the County Commissioners Association of Ohio and Fairfield County Job and Family Services Child Support Enforcement Agency.
Under Fairfield County Jobs and Family Services, I move Resolutions P through double A. Second discussion. Start a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions passed two zero. From the Fairfield County Juvenile and Probate Court, Resolution 2025-06.10.VV, a resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated into a major expense object category, Drug Court Number 2408, Subfund ATP Number 8209.
So move. Second discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yep.
Resolution passes two zero. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2025-06.10.CC, a resolution to approve a development agreement for Sycamore Grove Phase 1B subdivision.
From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, I move Resolutions double C through double F. Second discussion. How are you today? Who's running the 10 o'clock meeting? Is that you, Randall? You're gonna do it, right? All right. Holly, just on a footnote, I got a call yesterday or day before from an architect who had a question about Fairfield County zoning. And I said, well, I don't think we have zoning, but, you know, call Holly. So his name's Randy, you might expect to call him. Further discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions passed two zero. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2025-06.10.GG, a resolution to authorize the establishment of a new fiduciary fund for the sheriff's office.
Fairfield County Sheriff, by the, should GG, H, L, I. Second discussion. Start a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions passed two zero for the payment of bills, Resolution 2025-06.10.JJ, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need board commissioners' approval.
Second discussion. Start a roll.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes two zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for June 16th, 2025 at 9:00 AM.
Okay, the commission is not going to adjourn. You're going to remain in session. Randall, I know we're running three minutes behind here, but before we take a two-minute recess, why don't you alert the audience to what we're doing at 10 o'clock and then they can make a decision about whether they're staying or going.
Absolutely. So the only has the anti-preservation grant. It's a two-year grant that we apply for on behalf of the CADD Commissioners. So we're in the application period right now for what's called the 2025 grant. We already held the first public hearing, which kind of lays out what's eligible and available under the program. We've done some community outreach surveys and some collected information. So today's presentation will be on what it is that we are requesting that will be applied for this round of funding. So basically, it's a home repair, home rehab program for eligible, uh, house homeowners here in Fairfield County outside of city limits of Lancaster. So we'll be applying for that grant and like I said, a two-year grant will probably find out our award, rewarded to be later in the calendar.
Thank you, Randall. And with that, I'm gonna call a recess for two minutes. It's 10:04, I really need three minutes, but 10:06, I'll start. Let's see if it's. 10:00 for you to slip out without disrupting anything.
So we released a housing survey on May 23rd of this year, inviting the public and our housing partners to provide input for the 2025 chip application. We got 141 responses this year, which is more than any other year prior. So thank you to everybody who helped. We posted the survey on Facebook and we held the first public hearing on May 27th and then the second public hearing is right now. We will present the 2025 chip application activities being applied for to the Fairfield County Housing Coalition on June 12th. So this Thursday. The chip survey results actually, this surprised me, but they were the exact same as last year or as last time that we did this, especially for this section. So number one ranked need is homeowner repair. And then number two, homeowner rehab, then down being assistance, rental rehab or repair, and then number five is no need. So in this section, some things did change. Number one was roof repair or replacement, structural foundational improvements, electrical upgrades, which during the prior survey was ranked much, much lower. Plumbing repairs, first repair or replacement, hot water tank replacement and onsite accepting And then the Fairfield County housing statistics, Fairfield County population is 165,360. And then there are 64,767 housing units with 62,834 of those being occupied for owner occupied housing units, that's 74%. And then the median value of owner occupied homes is $314,000, $314,800. There are 15,958 rental units and then the median gross rent is $1,114. For homeowner rehab, we are expecting to complete four units with $66,100 average cost per unit. There is a $75,000 cap and that will be $264,400. Homeowner repair, $93,600. That would be six units with $15,600 average cost per unit.
Can I ask a process question?
Yes.
So these are the proposed split outs, if you will, between these things, the total of 400. In terms of like who would be the one getting the rehab or the repair, that's a player to be named player, right?
Yes.
And we don't really, that, that happens at community action from an administrative standpoint. Now I hear, like, we say yes to this one, that one.
Correct, yeah. So we go based on income, eligible eligibility, as well as we go on a first non-verseer basis.
So let's say the commission looks favorably on, on this proposal. Do we need to speed to that via a resolution or something at some point?
Yeah.
And what's the timeline on the need for that resolution of support?
So we're gonna, that'll be on the agenda for next Tuesday's meeting. We're gonna have the public hearing and get all that information out first and then next Tuesday, the resolution, which is called the authorizing legislation part of the application, be presented to the commissioners.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. Okay. And so all of those numbers will total the $400,000, which is, again, is the maximum amount we can ask for. Eligible activities for homeowner rehab include electrical, plumbing and heating systems, exterior and interior structural components such as roof walls, floors and foundations, room additions to alleviate overcrowding, replacing an owner occupied unit with manufactured or onsite built unit, or sorry, recycled unit. So for each activity, rehab and repair, income limit is 80% AMI. For homeowner rehabilitation, the county provides a no interest forgivable loan for 100% of the rehab costs over five years for the cost of rehabilitation. 20% of the loan is forgiven every year for five years, as long as the owner remains For homeowner repair, structural repairs, hatching or repairing roofs, windows and doors, mechanical repairs, including electrical, plumbing and heating systems, hot water tank replacement, plumbing system captains connecting to public water sewer, wells and septic, repair or replacing field systems, weatherization, energy efficiency measures like insulation, accessibility ramps and grab bars, kitchen and bathroom monolith, and then leadings paint, eliminating leadings and homes with children. Incoherent levels, like I said, 80%. So for one person, that's $61,050. For two people, it's $69,800 and it continues to scale on depending on how many people Our leverage resources for chip activities are our whole weatherization assistance program, Columbia Gas Warm Choice, Housing Assistance Grant, Area Agency on Aging, USDA Rural Development Housing Preservation Grant, Older Adult Home Modification Program, which is not yet launched, but will be soon, and then the Fairfield County Health Department. We have any questions?
Not that I haven't already asked.
Okay.
So a couple of things.
Yes.
Either I'm on the board of the community action, it's legal, we have two commissioners Am I required to abstain from this resolution?
Obviously, you need financial benefit from this or anything. Don't cause me to.
Yeah. And the second thing is Randall, the justice of one of our board meetings. The median rent, which is now one thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and that number's come down since you've taken out the metropolitan area and Columbus, that's pretty good.
Yeah, that's right. So there recently for, for this year, uh, the way that we calculate, uh, uh, which is called the fair market rent. It used to be we were, you know, grouped in with the Columbus metro area and now I define it, breaks it down for, for by, or, uh, zip code of location. So, uh, we used to have it kind of higher up because of being in the metro area, but depending on where you are in the county, it's, uh, that has come down.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty amazing when you think that twenty-five percent of our house stocks are rented, the company buying them, or is that, you know, out of, out of this area, is that kind of norm, the norm?
Typically rural areas have a higher rate of homeownership. Um, and so I think our homeownership rate is actually pretty good. I mean, it was a seventy,
Seventy-four percent.
Seventy-four percent. Um, actually pretty good.
Additional questions, Commissioner? Is there anything else that we should or here to be helpful? Anything else we need to do here?
No, I don't think so. I think, uh, just being able to host this meeting and, and get some more public input. If anyone has questions or comments about anything's presented here, uh, be happy to take those comments in.
I, during the break, I did ask him, um, because you excluded the city of Lancaster, but I asked him if it included villages, you know, the rest of the villages in the county and he said, yes. So it doesn't have to be all the community areas. It includes counties. Like I said, that's another thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. The other, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, good question, good answer. You did a good job today. We appreciate you. And with that, I'm gonna say that this public hearing is finished. The commission remains in session. Is there any other issue I haven't anybody like bring the intensive commission today?
Um, earlier, um, uh, you were talking about the data center.
Yes.
I'm assuming it's the one in, in Philly, right?
And that is the, the, the predicate, yes.
Yeah, the company that is, uh, doing the power generation that will be, because it will be onsite.
Yeah.
Um, has filed with the Ohio Power Siding Board. So there is a Ohio Power Siding Board, um, number now.
Okay.
And they've asked for three waivers, which is the same as what some companies did as far as not going out ten miles for doing their studies and that kind of thing. So anyway, that's already underway.
It is and, and, um, I, I don't wanna get too far into the details out of fear without getting it wrong. What there is is in tax treatment for data centers under existing law. And there's tax treatment for data centers under what would be the new law, one of the many proposals at the state. And, um, if they do change that, then, then I expect that, that project would be in jeopardy. Better bad, right or wrong, not making judgments about the policy issues that people are debating right now. It's just that, um, one of the many, many things that, that are, are, um, of concern um, in terms of, you know, what, what's this gonna look like when it's over? Um, I, I, I don't know the answer to that. We're all, we'll all find out, we'll all find out.
The local board has a meeting tonight. So I don't know if they have updates or anything, but the last meeting had, um, the, uh, maybe it's two meetings ago, they, they, um, company had, um, a projected timeline. They wanna break around in September, so they're trying to push it fast.
Yeah. Grab your PowerPoint.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other issue I need anybody to bring the intensive commission today? That does really sound interesting. Listen to the adjournment. I got a motion for adjournment. The second one is a comparison of saying, I, I will say in sign. Motion carries. Commission is adjourned. We thank you all for coming. We'll be remaining here as we have additional meetings, uh, going on. I'm gonna be with Greg at ten thirty. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Now at Columbus, the, the, uh,